Okay, I call to order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on April 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. As you can see, I will be your host tonight as Mayor Pro Tem, filling in for Adam. The number tonight for public input, before I forget, is you dial 346-248-7799. That's 346-248-7799. Webinar ID is 972-9436-2602. Press 9 to request to speak, and when you're prompted, star 6 to unmute. Will the clerk please call the roll?
All, Abel, Vincent, Here, Gutwine, Here, Bida, Here, Skilling, Here, Springsteen, Here, Franks, Johnson, Here, LeBure, Here, and Harrison, Here. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're starting off with, well, we'll have a series of three presentations from the Lakewood Advisory Commission or Committee. With that, Mr. Rome, if you want to take it away and introduce the chair?
Yes, thank you. So our first speakers are the Chair of the LAC, Peggy Ralph, and Heidi Barthol, who's a part of this committee. So they will take and give you the presentation.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Oh, good. Welcome. I'm so glad that we're on tonight. I am Chairman of Lakewood Advisory Commission, and oh, there goes my screen. Okay, great. So we did a presentation for you about safety in Lakewood. We have three presentations for each night. We have a diversity presentation and a small business presentation. So the Lakewood Advisory Commission has been very busy. If you want to see our presentations, please look at LakewoodSpeaks.org, and you will be able to find them there with all the documentation that goes with them and a recorded presentation. So that should be a lot of fun for you to look at. This first presentation, I'm going to let Heidi start with. It was brought by one of the members who's not here anymore. His name is Rick Ash, and he was very concerned about safety in Lakewood, bike safety, car safety, pedestrian safety. And it was his desire to do some research on it and bring some ideas to council. So that's what we've done, and thank you, Rish, so much that you brought this forward, and I think it's a great presentation. So Heidi, if you're there, if you'd like to start, go right ahead.
Okay, as you can see, this presentation is probably going to be about 14 months old. We finished it at the end of 2019, 12/19, 2019, and then COVID set in as we were about to go to city council with it last March 2020. And if you've looked through the proposal, you can see what some of our focus was. We identified the need as we were all going to more award meetings and meetings throughout the city. The citizens all over the city had been complaining about traffic problems, distracted driving, speeding, running red lights, a problem that's still with us today, folks. For a while during the pandemic, we saw for about four or five months, things really slowed down. We didn't see a lot of this, and I bet the Lakewood Police Department can give you some stats that some of our fatalities and some of our accidents were probably less during those times. But I tell you, the last two months, it has really increased again. So we divided this proposal into four main areas of focus, as the slides show, because there were an awful lot of subjects we could have tackled, and each one of these four could really be a proposal all by themselves. So if you, as a city council, feel one of them could do with some further study, you can certainly give it back to the committee, and we can focus in on that and do a lot more research with a lot more charts and drawings to see what we can do to solve these problems. And the areas, the tools, I think that your staff, the Lakewood City staff and the police department and the traffic department, who are very good, by the way, they really have the right things in mind. Our tools that we use to solve these problems broke out into three areas. As you can see from this slide, it's engineering, things we can do to streets to make them safer as we put in speed bumps, traffic lights, lighting in general along certain stretches and other traffic calming measures. Unfortunately, a lot of it involves slowing traffic down, and as we all know, motorists don't like that. So they tend to go around them, but the engineering is a very important piece to look at. Enforcement, of course, is the other one. If there's no enforcement mechanism by those that are running the red lights, and I'm all for one, having, coming out of the European situation and looked at what's going on in other countries. Enforcement is their big arm and iron hammer, and they have no qualms about enforcing it. And it's often with red light cameras, and you get the ticket in the mail, and nobody has to hand it to you personally, like maybe some of our ordinance or some laws say. I don't know where that is. But I think we really need to strengthen the enforcement arm, and it might mean hiring more police. Education is the third piece that's really important. A long-term public awareness program to address these issues and to put it out in front of the citizens that distracted driving kills. The other, one of the categories we looked at also was pedestrian and crosswalk safety. And we didn't delve into the pedestrian aspect too much because we were focusing on the drivers at this point. But I know there's been some study done and something brought before city council a while ago, because as I researched it, they put it before you in the guise of pedestrian and bike safety. So I think some of that topic has already been covered in the past. But a lot depends on the pedestrians who want to cross in the middle of the street on a not well-lit area. It's happened to us going down Alameda a couple of times. People running across the street in the dark by CCU, and there's no light there. At the last minute, you see them. Luckily, we weren't speeding down Alameda and could stop, but pedestrians own a piece of this too. So those are the areas that we focused on primarily, and we came up, as you see, in each one of these breakout areas for impaired driving, pedestrian crosswalk safety, distracted, drowsy driving, and speeding and aggressive driving. Under each one of these categories, you will see all our suggestions and oftentimes the links that go with them for you to explore this. And also what other cities have done, as you are well aware, Denver and Boulder are both Vision Zero cities. And these cities have drawn up extensive plans and created whole departments to set up a goal-oriented action plan so that they can meet these goals in a timely manner and ways how to do it. And it does involve money. It does involve political will, and it involves enforcement. Enforcement, again, like I say, is the big hammer. And I don't know how you feel about it, but I am not opposed at all to red light cameras in the high accident-prone areas along Colfax and Wadsworth. And a couple of these breakout pieces show you the map of the city where most of our crashes and accidents occur. So Peggy, you want to take it from here?
Here, go right ahead. I think I'm still here. Okay. As you can tell, this is a pretty serious subject. A lot of people are getting hurt. You can go through, oop, my slide changed. Bruce, can you flip up the slide for me? There it is. Yeah, back in 2019, we had 20 fatal collisions, and 25 people were killed in those collisions in the city of Lakewood, which is a lot. It's the highest we've ever had. In 2018, there were 17, and you say only 17. I mean, those are 17 lives that we lost, and we really don't want that to increase in Lakewood. We want that to get better. We want people to be more aware of what's going on in Lakewood. Can you go to the next slide for me, Bruce? Have any more? I want to thank the members of this team, Heidi and James Bunch and Rick Ash, who put this presentation together. I want to show you a couple of things. If you look on Lakewood Speaks, you'll see something that's behind me. There's a couple of characters. Something we decided would be a long-term program for Lakewood. We want to keep safety as a priority in Lakewood, and we want it to keep going. We want people to be aware of it. We want people to be aware of the rules of the road. And we have an idea that the LAC had four different inputs on a character and a tag name or something to go with it that would be a great program for Lakewood to use. So Bruce, if you want to take the presentation down, and you can see me more than you can see that. So you can see behind me. We started, everybody had some inputs, and I won the contest. So yay for me. I wasn't the chairman at that. I was a member. So this is kind of how Sina started out. It was just a drawing. And this is the character, and we came up with a name for it. The character's name is Sina. And Sina is generic. Sina can be anything you want, male, female, doesn't matter. Sina has a specific name reason, and the city of Lakewood can license this. Sina stands for safety is no accident. So we really like the name, and we think you will too. It can do a lot of things. One of the things with COVID going on, I've had a chance to play with Sina a little bit and just not have it as a drawing, but to actually play with it and have some fun character drawings. This is Sina talking to little Sina and saying, "Did you wash your hands during COVID?" But he's eating the soap, and so he's saying yes, and there's bubbles coming out his mouth. He's really cute. You can make all kinds of things. Sina was started as a coyote. We have a lot of coyotes, and we, at our parks, everybody knows there's coyote signs everywhere saying, "Be safe, be careful." So we thought a coyote might be a great character for the city of Lakewood. As you can see, the ones behind me are wearing COVID masks, so they can wear masks. There's all kinds of things Sina can do, and we know that with our presentation that the staff might come up with another idea. We're completely aware of that. We're not, we're just showing you what we think is fun and cute and that we can use in schools around, all around town. And whatever message we're trying to deliver, that people will see it, think it's fun, and look at it. So we're hoping that that's how we'll draw people in to say, "Don't cross, you know, against the light. Don't turn lanes the way you're not supposed to turn lanes. Stop at a four-way stop." You know, there's all kinds of stuff we can do, just like the flashing lights that we're using now. Our traffic department has the lights out that say, you know, "Click it or tick it. Make sure you buckle up." I mean, Sina can do all kinds of things, and we can use it pretty much everywhere. We can take it into schools, you name it. So I got the fun part of the presentation. I get to show you something fun that can make safety a lot safer for people in Lakewood. So any questions council has, please let us know.
All right, council. Anybody have any questions, any discussion? All right, Counselor Harrison, and then Counselor Gutwine, Counselor Springsteen.
Okay, sorry. I thought I unmuted me, but maybe not. Anyway, if we were going to stay focused on the four points that you had in the presentation, I think I'd like a further discussion on the education side of trying to figure out, you know, what and how. So that would be my druther. Rest of council can talk, but what a wonderful presentation. The information was well-researched, and I am so sorry you had to wait so long to get to us. But good work for everybody that was on the committee. You did a great job. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to echo a huge thanks for the work that you all did on this. This is something that we hear in our community and in our award meetings, and that, you know, folks are worried about it. And frankly, you know, I'm worried about it too when I'm on the streets or in the car with the kids. So really appreciate this. I am personally very interested in a Vision Zero plan in the long run. I think that's really a great direction for us to go. I know that we have a lot of budget concerns right now, but I would love to see Lakewood do this. You know, when it makes sense. And in the meantime, you know, maybe there's some smaller things that we can do. I also would be very interested in just getting more information. Maybe we can, you know, I don't know what the timing is, but more information about how the red light cameras work and what the pros and cons are. Because I have seen other cities start to use those more and more. So thank you. Great, well-researched. Appreciate it, and I would like to see us, you know, continue to discuss these items that you raised. Thank you.
Counselor Springsteen?
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. It was very well done. We've had some particular concern here in Ward Three about traffic issues along Jewel, and we've had a lot of questions and concerns about that and ideas about how to solve that problem. And so I really appreciate being able to draw from your research in trying to solve that problem. So thank you for that. And, you know, the very first way I came into contact with city council and actually, it was Counselor Royball years and years ago, was wanting some kind of solution to the traffic on an adjacent street here in my neighborhood. And so I think a lot of people think it's a very important issue. I guess I wonder just how can we support you and move things forward a little bit more in terms of actually implementing some of the suggestions you've come up with? I know there's always the complication of trying to work with, for instance, you know, the Department of Transportation and other entities that are involved in these matters. So I'd love to hear more suggestions on that, but thank you both for your efforts. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Councilor Abel and then Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. And thank, thank you, the LAC did a bang-up job on this. The, the data y'all put together is amazing. And the figures are kind of scary. I do like the idea that pedestrians are part of the equation here. And I, I agree with Ms. Harrison that education is probably our best tool. I can't tell you how many times I've come up on pedestrians in the middle of the night wearing a black shirt and black breeches and a black hat. And with our street lighting at the community-friendly level, you can't see those things. You can't see them walking. So I think we need to have a large education effort. Thank you. And great job, folks.
Thank you.
Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, ve- very nice. I would like some more information because I don't know where we go with this character that, as I'm understanding, can be used in the education piece and identification. Do we need to get some more information on that? On what would it cost to, I guess, register this character? And some maybe more ideas around that? You know, do we, or maybe we could even have like a slogan contest or something, you know? What is it that you would like to see displayed community regarding pedestrian safety or something? Or anything? So I'd like some more information, I think more around the character and how we would go about implementing that.
Thank you for asking that, I appreciate it very much. We know that city staff's going to take this over.
Okay.
And so I think they're going to look at all that. But we did look into making sure that the name we chose was not already taken. So it's not, it's available for us, which is great. I don't know exactly how much the licensing costs, depending on, you know, it's a personal license or a city license. I'm sure there's differences. And I know staff will look into that. So we're looking forward to putting more of that together with staff, answering any of their questions, helping any way they want us to. I would be happy to be part of development as it goes along if they'd like. Bruce, can you put up the Vision Zero picture that I had since Dana Gutwijn brought that up? I want to show you a picture that I, I found. You kind of get the idea of what, Vision Zero has a really broad-based idea of how cars and bikes should be looking, okay? So for the general public, they're like, what, you know, what does Vision Zero want? Well, I've actually seen this, this is in Denver. And it's also in Aurora. And what's happened is they're taking up a lane of traffic. They're moving traffic over, they're dividing everything up, they're putting little pylons in and they're putting the little green square that you see in Lakewood. That's how far Lakewood has gone with this design. They have put the green square in, but nothing else part of this. So that's, Vision Zero says, we know you don't have the budget for all of this. But maybe, you know, here's some ideas that might be good for you. The green square has, you know, pros and cons. And I'm sure Matt Duncan has a lot he can say about it. Because it was, you know, then those guys that sprayed it on the ground. We have it at Alameda and Garrison. If you haven't seen the green square, definitely drive by and look and see what happens. What's supposed to happen in our area, you're supposed to drive into the green square with your bike, not your car. Wait in the green square and then cross the street when the light changes. We haven't really figured that out very well. We see drivers pulling alongside, we see people not really paying attention to it. So that's why I think the barriers are probably more useful and trying to give cars a specific way to move out of the way of bicyclists. But it does take space, it takes room, you have to give up a lane. Drivers complained that the, the snowplows can't get down the street with these pylons. So there's a lot of challenges for people who have weather like we have. But that's the full idea of what Vision Zero like. Vision Zero likes this very much. It is practiced all over the place, trying to separate cars and bikes, which I really like. If I'm on my bike, I don't want a car right next to me, you know, or behind me. It's kind of scary. I'd like to be in a bike lane that's cordoned off from cars so I know that I won't be hit at any time. And I think that's something that Lakewood could really look at. I know Matt Duncan is working on that. And he's doing a really good job with, just at least trying what the green square looks like and if anybody, you know, pays attention. So I wanted to show that to you. So you can take that down, Bruce. I just wanted to give you an idea. So if you dig more into this document that we've, we've got and some of the websites we have on Lakewood Speaks, you'll see an awful lot of interesting ideas, good places to find research. And I know Matt's used a bunch of them. And he's, he's got a lot of good ideas out there. So hopefully that helps a little bit.
Heidi, your hand is up.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, since you're so interested in Vision Zero, and I know this article is referenced in the proposal, I have before me the one from the city of Boulder where they developed an action plan starting in 2019 to 2021, where they started out with a list of goals and the different steps. One of you or two of you might want to take a look at that. It really, Dana, yeah, it, it'll give you a really good idea. Boulder's done a pretty good job with it. I have to mention quickly though, I was researching the Denver, I did the Vision Zero research piece on all of this. And when I called the people in the city of Denver, they had just had an election and changed council members. And the lady that was in charge of this, she was no longer in office. And the one that took over never called back and I found out later she was in the hospital. So Denver for a year dropped the Vision Zero. They didn't put any teeth into it. The, the council member in charge didn't come up with following through on some of the provisions that they had set out to do. And as a result, the following year, all of the traffic incidences in Denver went up based on the goals that they weren't achieving. So you have to stick with this when you, when you put something like this into place. But this is several pages long and it lists all their goals and what they're doing. You can make a three-year plan out of this or a five-year plan. And so this is Boulder's and that seems to be working more. And it was a draft at the time, as you can see, when I printed it. I took the trouble to print this off because I found it. And I knew it was going to be useful when, when we had to present months ago. Because it's, it's at least a working model. So look that up and it'll give you additional ideas. We couldn't put everything in the proposal. But I know this is listed in it. Just look up city of Boulder Vision Zero Action Plan. And then it'll give you some dropdowns to look in. Really simple, okay?
Thank you so much, Heidi.
Yeah, you're welcome.
If anybody are out of questions, we can go to our next presentation if you'd like. Any more questions? Okay.
Well, wait, hang on just a second. Peggy, hang on just a second. Let me just check in with council, were there any other comments? And I do want to check in on public input as well.
Okay.
We're going to do a public comment each step on each of the presentations here. Let me check in with Mr. Rome, do we have anybody on the line?
That is negative.
Okay.
Okay. I just, my only two cents on this is I, you know, I'm on the legislative committee and I was always saddened every time the distracted driving and the texting stuff dies. For some reason, they can't figure out how to pass something that makes sense. And I know that distracted driving is some astronomical figure as far as the percentage of accidents that aren't really accidents, they're people texting or whatever while they're driving. And for whatever reason, our state legislature can't seem to figure that out. So I don't know. We've talked about that somewhat on the local level, but it's pretty hard to enforce. It's just going to be the city of Lakewood, so. Anyway, Vision Zero is interesting. I seem to recall that it was Council of Bure or somebody a year or two ago was talking about this. He was way out in front of this, back when it was uncool to talk about Vision Zero, so. Here we are, okay. Peggy, it's all yours.
Okay, great, thank you so much. The next group we have is our diversity group and that's not actually a committee, it's an ad hoc committee that we put together in the LAC. And we want to bring Karen on board. Bruce, do you have Karen? There she is. I think here's Casey.
Casey, Casey's going to be your presenter tonight. And then Karen is there as the diversity chair.
Fantastic. If you'd like to take it over, Casey, go right ahead, thank you.
Actually Karen's going to introduce it.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so I'm Karen Corday, the chair of the ad hoc diversity committee. And again, this did not go through the normal channels because we wanted to revisit the diversity committee that we had five years ago and see the progress we made or did not make. And so it was to the LAC as a whole. And essentially what we learned in our summary for our potential recommendations is do not have any representation from Ward Two. So we would like to target recruitment and communication in Ward Two. Target those that rent or otherwise do not own their own housing. Reach out to in-city, non-traditional schools, for example, Rocky Mountain Community College. Identify reasons that parents may not participate in the LAC. And then implement equity lens to be used by the LAC when making a decision. And basically what an equity lens is, because not everybody's familiar with that term, is, you know, when we're, when we're making recommendations, asking a series of three to five questions to make sure that we are taking others' views into consideration before making the recommendation.
Casey, Karen, Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt. Should I be showing the presentation while you're talking? I apologize.
You're good. Thank you, Bruce. Perfect.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So Bruce, if you want to go to the next slide. The final recommendation would be that we would like to see the diversity committee made a permanent committee. We felt that if we have this as a permanent committee, we can help remove barriers and expand direct outreach by creating best practices that can be applied to other boards and commissions. And we could meet regularly to evaluate processes and representation. And because we're, we're making the recommendation to make this permanent, then our proposed mission would be the LAC diversity committee's mission is to, is to develop recommend best practices in diversity for internal purposes that can also be used to ensure diversity within all boards and committees within this of Lakewood. Casey, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, well, I guess just that, that this committee defined diversity in a kind of a multi-pronged way. It, it is more than gender and race. So that we took in a lot of considerations. I know y'all looked at the presentation already, so that was defined, so I just want to point that out.
Okay. Karen, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else to your presentation? Is it, are you done?
Yes, we're done.
Ready, ready for questions?
There we go.
Ready for questions.
All right, we, Councilor Harrison and then Councilor Springsteen.
I, again, thank you so much for all that you've done with your report. It seemed as though I, I wanted to verify the, kind of the direction that you were hoping for this committee. It seemed as though with the recommendations that you were kind of inward-focused is the best way I can describe it in terms of you want to focus on LAC and, and getting diversity there and using the diversity community or committee to be able to look at your future proposals, correct? Am I interpreting the direction that you want to go? Yes, no?
Casey, Casey, you want to take that one?
So initially, yes, the initial assignment was purely internal. We're hoping that we can develop tools that first benefit and maybe perhaps are tested out on LAC. And then instead of everyone else reinventing the wheel, everyone can just learn and use the same tools. So hopefully it will grow into a, a culture change.
Cool. I like the idea of priming on LAC first and then going further if you decide that you need to or want to. I like that idea. Testing out things in your own group probably makes real sense. And getting more people in, in Ward Two would be wonderful as well. So thank you so much, good job.
Councilor Springsteen?
Hi Karen and Casey, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. And Karen, thank you for speaking with me today a little more at length about some of the goals of this committee, which I think is so important. And I agree with you, should be made something more permanent than an ad hoc committee. We, we discussed some of the, some of the current goals and long-term goals. And one of the terms that you came up with, with was equity lens, which I think is the way of putting this. When you have viewpoints around the city that are so different based on different perspectives of disability or color or whatever the case may be, we need to get those viewpoints in, in decisions we're making within the city in all aspects of our decision-making. And so I would love to get more from your committee. I feel like this is a way for us to grow this issue and to, to draw more people around the city. And, and you and I, Karen, talked about how oftentimes we, we just don't have a lot of interaction for, from certain aspects of our community. And how, how do we, how do we make people feel welcome? And how do we get past trust barriers and things like that? To, to get people more engaged in this kind of committee. And, you know, the thing you mentioned was some communities might feel a lack of trust in the, in government entities. And, and so how do we, how do we improve that situation? You know, and, and we, as you know, I, I have had concerns about issues with regard to racial profiling and things that we're seeing around the nation. And so I would love to see an expansion of your committee in terms of looking at those national issues, recognizing, acknowledging what our own shortcomings might be and, and how to expand on just increasing awareness in, in terms of that kind of thing. And so I just want to thank you. I, I think this is kind of a fledgling situation, but could become one of the most important committees in our city. And so thank you for doing what you're doing, I appreciate it very much.
Councilor Gutwijn?
Thank you. So yeah, I really want to thank you guys so much for the work that you did and for creating this committee in the first place. And creating this ad hoc committee to address this really, really important issue. And I, it's kind of surprising and almost shocking to hear there's no one from Ward Two. I know that, you know, there have been in the past, of course, but definitely something that needs to be addressed. And it's just, you know, those are the kind of things that you catch when you're tracking and paying attention and then you can help correct those. You know, and ensure that we really have a cross, a cross-section of our community. So I, I would definitely support making this a more permanent commu- committee. So I would definitely support making this a more permanent committee. I would also love to see, you know, to see topics, not just related to the committee itself, but to our city and how we can really, truly be an inclusive community. But you know, I'm sure you all will come up with your own topics and then we can send hallmark assignments down the road. But just so, so important. And then the equity lens, I also, I love that you're going to, you know, that you're proposing to do that in the LAC. I would love to see the City of Lakewood have an equity lens on every proposal that comes through. And like you all mentioned, it's, you know, all different cross-sections. And it's about age and gender and race and, you know, income levels. And we really need to be thoughtful about how our policies impact everyone in our community. And I think we do try to do that, of course, already. But I think that having it formalized and having it written is just, it's important. So thank you for raising this topic. And I support all of the work that you're trying to do.
Thank you so much, Dana. I appreciate it very much.
Counselor Bida and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. I appreciate the presentation very much. And you identified something that's of particular interest to me in that I sit on the screening committee and we make appointments to the various boards and commissions. And one of the things that you mentioned was that you were looking to try and get more diversity on those appointments. And I think that's a great idea. But there's some, you know, problems with it. And I wonder if you've thought about them or if you have any ideas on how to address them. Number one is reaching out to, you know, the various diverse communities and getting them interested in applying for these positions. Because we can talk all night about, you know, trying to take into account these different backgrounds and so forth. But if they don't have a seat at the table, you know, they don't, they really haven't got what I think they should. They need to have a seat at the table. And the way we do that is to get them appointed. I was wondering, my question is, have you given any thought as to how to recruit in these communities and get them interested and to apply for these various boards and commissions that we have in the city? Have you given that any thought at all?
Do you guys want to answer that?
I can, sure. So I know one of, okay. So the scope of the committee initially was indeed to look at where the weaknesses were and the strengths were. So we have lightly discussed how to go into it. But that is one of the, that would be a new assignment for the permanent committee would be to look into those things, yes.
Okay. And I think along with that is to identify, you know, because some of these things you want to talk about are kind of touchy. You don't really want to ask somebody, well, what's your income level? Or what's your, you know, things like that that might be a little touchy. And yet, how do we identify them if we don't, you know? So that would be part of the, I guess, the challenge would be not only recruiting them, but identifying them in the first place.
Yes, being sensitive to people's needs and risk tolerances and all of that. That is very important to address. You know, I guess maybe find the low-hanging fruit. Someone from Ward Two would be a good low-hanging.
Exactly, yeah. That's how we wanted, we hate to pick on you guys, but awareness is the biggest thing. Now we're aware there's a problem and we can move from there. So now that you guys know, you might invite us to your meetings or, you know, bring it up at your meetings, talk about LAC. And having us on here tonight lets people know in the City of Lakewood that we're here. We exist. We're the largest committee that you guys have with 30 members. So yeah, we've got a couple of openings. We'd love to have new members. Come join us. Look at our presentations on LakewoodSpeaks.org. And yeah, it's just a baby steps. We're trying to move forward and grow and look more like the City of Lakewood. That's where we're trying to go.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mike.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. I would like to thank Karen and Casey for your presentation and your interest in this. This is an area really of more sensitivity. And actually, I was going to bring up many of the things that Counselor Bida did. I sat on the screening committee at one point. And we never selected somebody based on gender or race. It was always on merit and how well they could fulfill that position, what their interest was. So I think that there's a good reason to look at that what someone's qualifications are really needs to be taken into account. Also, you know, the implication is, is that the boards and commissions are not diverse. Do you have any data to back that up?
This particular data, or this particular dataset that we took was purely voluntary based on LAC data. And that's it. So that was the scope of, that was the scope of this assignment. We didn't look at other boards. We didn't check out diversity in other boards. We were basing it on a very small sample, which was.
Which was, the sample included what again, Casey?
LAC.
Just only LAC? Okay. I think in order to have credibility, it's important to also look at data from a wider scope. That's just the input I would have. Thank you.
I think that would be a great, a great assignment for a permanent diversity committee. Just a plug. Diversity.
Counselor Vincent and then Counselor Springsteen.
Yes, I've always thought that, and in fact, I pushed. And at one time, I don't think that this came forward as quickly as it may have because I know there were several that were interested in making this a permanent committee. So I would very much welcome that. And speaking from Ward Two, we have brought it up multiple times at meetings. And I will just give you a heads up on this too. Oftentimes, those people who are at the meetings that we bring it up with are the ones who have been on all the committees and are very active. So I would love to work with this committee on how do we reach different folks? We've sent our committees out on the, I call it the big hunt, you know, to try to find somebody. And perhaps that we let people know that if they're on this committee, they don't have to be on all the committees, you know? They don't have to be in the Morris Park and they don't have to be on the sustainability, that they can do this and have some input. So just let me know what I can do and I will be out there beating the bushes to get some Ward Two folks. And I'm glad that you recognized that, that one of the inputs we have to have is from all the wards, that it's not all in one, so that we do get a cross-section of folks. So thank you very much.
Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, just a couple of afterthoughts I wanted to bring up. That we have such a large Hispanic community in Lakewood, especially Ward Three. And so I would love to see an outreach to the Hispanic community and would be happy to help with that. You know, I know you have, being from the Hispanic community myself, there's a variety of cultures even within the Hispanic community and really very hard-working people who might not know about something like this. And so would be happy to help with that. Also, I have just been in touch with somebody in the Ward Two community who is interested and has had, he's actually an African-American. So this could be just the person you're looking for. So anyway, I'll be in touch with you on that. And I just wanted to mention too, in my campaigning, I had mentioned to you, Karen, knocking on one door to another, it was pleasing to me how diverse our community is. And I think sometimes it's hard to see that. But what that says to me is we're missing reaching out to those different cultures somehow in the way that we're doing it. And so I have great faith that you're going to figure out how to do that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think now let's go to public input on this. Mr. Rome, do we have anybody in the queue for public comment?
We do have someone who's called by phone. They put their hand up. So maybe suggest to Star Nine if they want to speak about the diversity, they might be calling for the last discussion. But there it is. The hand is up. So I will bring them on. Mr. Mayor Proten with the last four of zero two five six.
Okay, zero two five six. Go ahead and press star six on mute. Yep, looks like you're good to go.
Hello, my name is Amir Allen. I'm from Ward Two. And apparently, this is perfect timing. I've been looking into getting involved and now I have to. Apparently, the police came out to beat me up just so that I can get involved with the city. I have been involved in all sorts of different diversity things, helped talk diversity training between Denver and Aurora and South Denver. And I have a lot of suggestions that I would love to give you. And hopefully, I can be a part of the diversity committee. There's quite a few different organizations that are involved in the metro area that you guys might not know about. One is the Urban Leadership Foundation, which I went through and am a part of. And it literally helps find people that are interested in being involved in their communities and teaches them how to reach the proper authorities and do things throughout the government. There's other organizations like this with a lot of different ethnicities and et cetera. And I look forward to sharing that because I find that diversity training is necessary. It's almost like cognitive therapy to show people where their thought processes about others are not correct. And even I benefited from it. So I think everyone, including the council, would really benefit from diversity training. I can't hear anything now.
Anything else? Were you finished, sir?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, yeah. And just, you know, the city is currently recruiting for positions on the Lakewood Advisory Committee. So you probably, I'm sorry, commission, you want to take a look at our website? So that's happening right now. It's perfect timing.
Yes, indeed. That's what I am currently doing right now, as soon as I can find it. And that's one more thing. It is really hard to find the numbers to call in for the city council meeting.
Okay, thank you for that and I will pass it along to others as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for calling in, sir. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else, Mr. Rome?
Nope, he was it.
Okay, council, is there any other questions on this particular topic? Or do you want to move on to the next? Okay, well, thank you, Karen, and thank you, Casey, for the presentation. A lot of good information there. So I'm sure we will be hearing more about the diversity committee. And it sounds like the question presented will be to make that a permanent committee at some point here in the maybe not-so-distant future if council wants to go that direction. Okay, so next presentation, whoop. Dana, Counselor Guwane?
Sorry, Counselor Skilling. Do we need to get consensus on that and to move that forward? To make it a permanent committee?
Yeah, my understanding was that at some point that would be, I think tonight was the presentation, the educational piece. But I'll defer to City Manager Hodson on that.
Yeah, I'm trying to think that through in my mind as well. If we don't take actions, we don't take action on study sessions, maybe it would be prudent to just take a consensus vote and then we can bring that forward and make that official in the future. Is that, Mr. Rome, does that sound appropriate to you? I don't see it anymore.
I think Ms. McKinnney Brown came on. I think that might be the better person to ask.
Well, I think the question would be if we're going to, we can have consensus on bringing back would be a resolution, I assume, to form a committee. So if there is consensus by this group to bring it back in the future and then have a vote or a further discussion if need be, we can go ahead and do that tonight if you'd want to see a resolution come back. You guys good with that?
That makes sense because that was listed in the presentation and in the packet, it had that recommendation. So I think we, my preference would be that we should take consensus tonight and then we can bring it back.
Okay, is there a consensus to bring it back in the future in the form of a resolution? I think there's, from what I gather, there is consensus to do so. And there is consensus to do so. Okay, well, there you go, Casey and Karen and Peggy.
Great. My only addition to that, Dave?
What's that?
My only condition, or not condition, addition to that is that we would like them to stay under the LAC. So that's the only addition I would add to that. Thumbs up. Okay, thanks. We do have one more presentation. Are we ready? I have Jamie.
Yeah, Jamie Cornell. She's our secretary. She's going to give this last presentation.
Jamie is going to do a presentation on how COVID has impacted small business. So take it away, Jamie.
Thank you, Peggy. Thank you, everyone. Yes, Jamie Cornell, Secretary of Lakewood Advisory Commission. Apologies for the long recording previous to this. So hopefully, some of you had a chance to watch a recording on this. And then also, it's a pretty long proposal. So I'm going to do my best to summarize to date what we have found. But this was a grassroots proposal brought to council, I believe, last March or April. And it was sent back or approved and sent back to our civic awareness committee in order to research financial and social impacts of COVID-19 on Lakewood's small businesses and potential methods to increase awareness of and influence citizen behavior that could benefit these businesses. So our committee started, I will say, a large disclaimer on this is that this is a huge amount of data that we gathered and tried to compile and it was ever-changing. So over the last year, as we were gathering information, mostly a nine-month window, things were constantly changing, as we know. So the most recent data that we have gathered to date probably came as of the end of February. So anything that we're showing is probably from the windows of about March of 2020 through February of 21. But some of the background that we found when we did this large-scale research and we reached out to small businesses, small business associations, the liquidated academic department. we reached out to small businesses, small business associations, the liquided economic development department, and they were extremely helpful in providing us a baseline of information and helping guide our research moving out from there and helping us understand where to move forward, was that so many small businesses are handling this differently. Some have pivoted incredibly successful, especially those that already had an online base in which to operate their business. Most of the businesses that are based on gathering people are struggling. So anywhere that required people to be physically present in groups are struggling the most. But then there are also some different sectors that are thriving. Home construction, large-scale construction hasn't faltered as much as some of retail and many small businesses. Most of the data that we tried our best to gather when we were focused on small businesses was focused on those local Lakewood businesses with 25 employees or fewer, which was sometimes difficult to separate due to the fact that some of the data was in such a large-scale gathering and mass quantity. And another challenge we faced and some of the things we were able to find and share is that there's a lag in the data processing, right? So most of the data that we have seen and that I think we continue to see is at about a six to eight month delay due to the time it takes to gather and understand the way things have impacted. And then also that the Economic Development Department in Lakewood has also worked to facilitate $3.3 million of local business grants. It was funded through local or through Federal Cares Act dollars that filtered down locally and it was over three rounds to over 337 local Lakewood businesses. So pretty impressive turnaround in amount of funding. In the proposal, the actual document, the second appendix is all of that information. So if you needed to go back through there and reference where and how that money was allocated and to whom over and what reasons those were all used for, it's an incredibly large document that was added, but it's a wide amount of information. This slide is just a quick snapshot of employment trends in Lakewood. And you can see a small dip over in the 2020 range right here. But what economic development did a good job of helping me understand was that we are somewhat modeling. It looks like Lakewood is modeling with national trends. So we don't fall, it doesn't look like we're falling too far outside the national trends as far as employment and business closings. But on the same note, there was a 2020 Yelp analysis that did estimate that they believe that up to at least 100,000 small businesses or businesses as a whole have closed due to the fact of the conditions of the pandemic, right? That employment numbers are down. We do expect them to rise, but it was an incredibly difficult year, especially for those smaller industries. This is a quick snapshot of another survey that we gathered. This is also the first appendix in the proposal. This was from a nonprofit that gathered information from small and some larger businesses, but it was nationwide gathering information. This was very, very early in the pandemic. So this was March and April data. And this was when they wanted to understand what these small, small businesses were struggling with the most. So back in the early stages and still some now, struggling with paying rent, making sure their employees were financially comfortable, making sure they could maintain that level, a customer level of work, either projects or clients or even just retail sales, getting customers through their door on their websites, right? Or even online to order food from them, making sure they still had customers coming in. And then accessing the government support, right? So there's a lot of finance and making sure that they could just maintain operations at a healthy rate to stay open. Through the research that we did and everything that we gathered, and I will say in the proposal, there's a huge amount of links. Those are available to you. We tried to do a really good job of everything that we gathered and found across the nation in different creative ways in which cities were trying to support their small businesses. We tried to provide those links so that you could take it and run and read from there. But the summary we came across were kind of five areas that seemed to be the most common or even the ways in which we could best support the businesses that we serve in Lakewood. And one of them was to improve the website and the associated Lakewood Small Businesses map. So within the Economic Development Department and on the City of Lakewood website, they have an amazing page of COVID-19 resources for these businesses, but they're kind of buried. So if, I believe if a small business was well-versed in understanding how to access these resources in advance, they would have no problem. But if we wanted to make this a readily available, very user-friendly, some kind of reordering or re-advertising of where this is allocated on the website might be in order. Another area was investing in public awareness campaigns, so focusing on shop local campaigns, social media pushes using the accounts that the City of Lakewood already has, but just focusing more on small business, radio and TV promotional campaigns, and even just newsletters and physical signage. And their Lakewood Speaks and Looking at Lakewood are already really well-done advertising mediums. So how can we augment those or further advertise to be able to support the businesses in the way that they need of us right now? And then increase the marketing promotion, right? Through the website, city, social media. And then providing tax and financial burden relief in various formats. We touch a lot on restaurants, restaurant delivery, and then also on businesses, right? And the studies we show, they need alleviation from some of the financial burdens that they're finding, whether it's for paying for PPE, making sure their employees can get paid, paying the rent on their location. What that looks like, I'm not sure. And then also working with city or county officials and health departments to make sure that we're able to get all restaurants back to normal capacity and keep it there. And we do touch on a section in our proposal regarding the Five Star Program, Angel Relief Fund, and other restaurant-specific services that are helpful. But those were the kind of the things that rose to the top. And these are our committee members that worked on the proposal. Thank you, thanks to our entire committee. We worked really hard and had a lot of effort. And thank you so much to the Lakewood Economic Development Department. Robert Smith and his team were incredibly helpful throughout the process in providing us access to information as soon as they had it and also support and understanding how much more we might need to gather, different directions to go in. So with that, thank you.
Okay, well done. Council, any comments, questions?
There we go.
Councillor Gutwine and then Councillor Vincent.
Thank you. Again, another just really great presentation with so much information and so well-thought-out. And I just, you know, this is just so important and so, you know, it's just important that we do everything that we can for our small businesses right now. I know that we all know that. And I think I'm just looking through our website and I was looking through it as I read through your proposal and I do think that you make some really great points and there are so many really good resources in here. And I do wonder if it would be possible if we could put it on our homepage so that, you know, like our support, support small businesses right on the homepage. Because I know that people in the community really do want to shop local and they want to support, support our businesses. But like you mentioned, it is kind of tricky to find that resource that is very well-done. So I do want to applaud our Economic Development Department for all the work that they've done over the last year and putting together all these resources. And let's highlight and elevate it so that people can access it easier. That was my first comment for now and I may have additional thoughts in a moment, but just really want to thank you for, for bringing this up, for getting creative. And again, to thank our Economic Development Department for really helping our businesses through these difficult times.
And I note that our economic director, Robert Smith, has joined us. So he is here. Council has any questions of him? He likes the really hard ones, the ones where, ask him for a really specific number. He loves those. All right, Councillor Vincent?
Yeah, I just, I was really impressed with all the data gathering. And people on council know, I probably don't say things like that very often. So I really appreciate the information. I did not know, I know there's some local things like through Alameda Gateway, WCCA, probably South Business, I keep forgetting, it's the South Business District, that are trying to work locally. For the one I'm thinking off the top of my head is, WCCA is trying to do the Passport Project, which is 15 restaurants, you know, and you can get stickers. I know they're trying to gather more momentum around that, so that might be someone to work with. And I believe that Alameda Gateway has something kind of similar to that, some kind of promotions to go visit local. So as we move forward, and I don't know what your connection has been with those groups, but they would definitely be on the playing field with you on that. And anything, I think it's fair to say, probably ED might, Economic Development might agree with that too, that they're good group of people and will do anything that they can to assist local businesses in LAC. So thank you.
Councillor Gutwine, your hand is up. Is that the leftover or is that a new hand?
It's a new hand. I remembered a question that I had was, the point about helping businesses navigate the Five Star Program, is that something that we do? Or does the county do that? Or is anyone doing that? And I, I'm sure the answer is yes, I just don't know who it is.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Gutwine. That's really a question for Robert Smith. It's a real fluid topic, actually. So Robert, do you want to take a stab at that?
You bet, happy to. The Five Star Program for folks that are maybe perhaps not as familiar with it is something that all of the cities in the county and the county itself got together and established so that restaurants, businesses that want people to come in, in the door, if they took additional steps to keep people safe. So in other words, additional distances and contact tracing and some things like that, they got a little bit more freedom, if you will, on that dial. So if we were operating at one level, they could actually operate on one level below that as long as they took these additional steps. We did implement that program. It's still standing up and ready to go. As we've moved down the dial successfully, that has become less important because we're already moving into those areas where there's more ability to put folks out. And, you know, we don't even want to think about it, but if we were to go back up there, that plan is still in place and we still implement it. But it's there and we're promoting it, you know, for all of the businesses that need that. So, and if I could, just as long as I get the floor real quick, I really want to thank Jamie and her crew and all the folks at the LAC. One of the great things about working with the LAC is they come up with all of these great ideas and we very much want to hear them and listen to them and know them because they challenge us and they give us different ways of thinking. So the framework is terrific. So I just want to say thank you to Jamie and to Peggy and all the folks over there at the LAC for helping to bring this to the forefront. Thank you very much.
Director Smith, I had a quick question on one of our programs. We talk about small businesses and bringing people in and helping them. Do we still run the facade program? Is that still a grant program that exists in Lakewood?
Yes, we do, sir. As a matter of fact, and we'll be pushing that out here coming in the upcoming months here along the way. One of the, one of the changes, the highlights that we put into it in this year is we've kind of made it so that we can go all around the city and not necessarily restricted to those areas that we were before. But in your budgeting process, you've approved budgeting for that program and our anticipation is that we'll have about 10 or so facade program grants going out in all the areas of the city. So we want to make sure that we get grants in all the areas of the city, but it'll be a little bit more all around. But yes, we still do.
And the application for that, if a business wants to apply, when you're pushing that out, they can just look on the lakewood.org site?
Yep, we're putting it back up here pretty quickly. Obviously, we've been spending most of our time working on the relief packages and that sort of a thing. And so now we're getting back to our, what I would call our bread and butter agenda. And so those things will be coming out and the opportunity to apply for those grants will be coming up here in the next couple of months. We'll be promoting it pretty heavily. There's two rounds, two rounds that's sure that, in the first round, we make sure we get dollars going to all parts of the city. And in the second round, we make sure that we spend the entirety of the budget in terms of improving the facades of commercial properties around the city.
Heidi, your hand is up?
Yes, I want to commend the Lakewood Economic Development Department for all the work they do. And here's what I'd like to add. I was a participant in several of them, Neighborhood, the West Colfax and the Southwest Business Association. I attended those meetings and more than one or two. And what I found, among the other participants, there was always somebody there who was on the Lakewood Economic Development Team. And this is nice to see that they have a direct connection with all of these organizations to try to hold things together and to put the resources out there for anybody that's a member of those teams that are out there. And so, good work, Robert. It's been a joy to get all your information and to work with you on this because I think you guys do a wonderful job with the short staff. You should have somebody else and look what, look what we can all do when we all work together.
Ms. Hudson, is there any consensus on this? I know there was the five recommendations. Obviously, there was some bigger policy goals, but I think there were some more discreet ones as far as maybe the website, kind of a reorganization on that.
Yeah, there's, as Robert said, there's some nice recommendations by just having the fresh set of eyes from the lens of the small businesses. So we will absolutely implement those as quickly as we can. So, and we're really grateful. I also would like to really congratulate and thank the folks on the LAC for all this good work. I thought Jamie's presentation was especially really helpful and informative, so thank you.
Great.
Let's open up to public input at this point. Mr. Rome, do we have anybody on the line?
I do not see anyone, no.
Let me just echo what others have said. That was a fantastic presentation. Peggy, along with the rest of the presentations, Jamie, thank you. That was a lot of really good information. And I do highlight that Lakewood did facilitate millions of dollars in this past year to a lot of different businesses around town that really needed it. As a member of one of those committees, there was a lot of ask and a lot of, you know, you wish you could give a lot more given how much folks were hurting. So anyway, thank you guys for the recommendations and thank you for the presentations.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, everybody on council. I did have a last couple of things to say. We are having a retreat this Wednesday. It's going to be a modified retreat. It'll be online Wednesday evening and the mayor is going to speak with us for a half an hour. And then councillor Harrison is going to be there. So we're excited you're going to be there, Karen, and talk about her experience on LAC. So that's going to be a lot of fun to hear from her. And I also wanted to thank council one more time for having us on, for highlighting Lakewood Advisory Commission. It's been a really good committee to be on. We do have some openings, so make sure you apply. Look on lakewoodspeaks.org for our presentations and make sure you go on Lakewood website to look up for the application. It's a good committee. I've had a really good time on this committee and I'm glad that it's part of Lakewood and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much, council.
And thank you, and thank you to all of our presenters. Okay, well, if you want to stick around, Peggy, we're moving on to districts. So that's item six. All right, so this is the continuation of the first study session. It was originally supposed to be in one night, but as I recall, we were going pretty late. I think we got about halfway through the slide deck. We got through a lot of the big issues, but then we decided to call it a night, come back tonight and finish up what is probably best described as the educational 30,000-foot view of some of these issues that those in the Development Dialogue Committee, we met three times on this topic. We're very well-versed in this, but all of council has not had perhaps the same opportunity to dig down into these issues. So tonight will be the part two of three. This will be the educational part and then we'll come back, I believe, Ms. Hudson's in June for the study session where, at that next study session, we will, I assume, we will go through- will go through each of the recommendations and try to gain some kind of consensus into what will ultimately form the bones of an ordinance that could propose some changes to the existing rules on these districts. So again, tonight will just be the follow-up on the educational piece and look for the next study session in June where we'll go one by one through these and see if we can get some consensus on these issues.
In fact, Mayor Protam, it's scheduled for June 21st.
Okay, so there you go. June 21st with the study session and then obviously following that, out of that will come an ordinance, first reading, second reading, and these discussions will continue. So after tonight, you should have enough to answer some questions from constituents or talk about it at ward meetings, at least what the universe of things are that we're discussing with these issues. So with that, I know we have Director Hutchinson joining us and if Mr. Rome, I think, is running the slide deck. Okay, so this is where we wound up. We stopped on slide nine and we've gotten, there was some feedback on Lakewood Speaks. I think we all got emails on this and some public comment. We've heard this in the committee as well and we've heard even from some on council about the issue of whether we should just prohibit the metro districts at all. And I think that that's a fair question and that's a fair discussion to have. And I think that we would circle back to this. I think the best way to handle it would be to go through all of the recommended changes or reforms to the existing law and then see what we get consensus on eventually in that June meeting, see what the ordinance looks like. And if council decides that, you know, these guardrails aren't enough, we should just prohibit them, then we can certainly take that up and have a vote on whether or not just to prohibit them altogether. I think that's a fair discussion to have. You'll also, we talked last time and we'll talk, I think, a bit tonight about, you have the option of prohibiting them, you also have the option of just limiting the size of them. A lot of metro districts, the vast majority of districts you never hear about, they're smaller. Once you get these big monsters, as far as money-wise, the millions and millions and millions of dollars, geographic-wise, residence-wise, the size as they grow, obviously you're going to have a lot more problems. And it could be that one of the best solutions is to either limit debt that districts can have, limit the size of them, however you want to do it, but there are a lot of options everywhere, everything from just some of these recommendations to maybe just limiting the size and scope of them to a prohibition altogether. So that is slide nine and we can move on then to the next series of slides, which I'll deal with the recommendations, starting from, it is page 12, if you're following along, on the staff memorandum dated March 5th, 2021. And so we're on the middle of that page and this is recommendation 10. So I don't know, Jay, if you want to step in on this part?
Sure, I'm happy to. Thank you, Mayor Protam. Good evening, council. This first set, the referred to as recommendations C1 through 10, actually are pulled from the memo of mid-2020, which was a much lengthier memo. As the Development Dialogue Committee worked through the topics, they pulled this group out for consideration by the full council. And most of these are pretty straightforward. They are all financial limitation types of steps that could be taken. The first one, to use a consultant to review the financial plan that's proposed by a district, actually was also addressed in council's discussion at the last study session, is number six, I believe it was. And I think there was, there generally seemed to be support for having a consultant do some financial evaluation. And just as a reminder, the reason for that primarily is that the city does not have this kind of expertise on the staff. And given the infrequency with which the city council considers new metro districts, it didn't seem to make sense to add that kind of expertise, but it is available from consultants. So one option might be to skip C1, thinking it is already addressed, but perhaps I've misread the council.
You want to just, Jay, if you, I suppose we can go through this slide and then we can go to council for any questions at the end of the slide?
Sure, be happy to. C2 is to make sure that the financial plan, and there is a financial plan included in the service plan for Metropolitan District, and maybe I should take a moment and talk about service plans. I'll make this really short, but for those who may not have been involved in any of this process until tonight, it's important to understand what the service plan is. It's the operational guidance document that applies to a metro district. It's also the document that the city council passes on, either says, yes, it's fine, no, it needs to be modified, or no, we're not going to approve this district or this district service plan. Within that service plan typically is a financial plan and it's important that that financial plan be based on the estimated costs, reasonable estimates of the cost of the actual improvements the district will be performing. And so that's all this C2 recommendation is, to make sure that that tie is clear and the estimates are realistic. C3 establishes a limitation on debt. And debt is often the topic of discussions about metro districts. It's not the only financial topic, but it's a key topic because it's often incurred early in the process before a district is fully developed. This C3 recommendation would establish a maximum debt mill levy and a maximum duration during which that mill levy could be applied. Those two things together will limit the amount of property tax that owners, end-users in a metropolitan district would ultimately pay. The mill levy, of course, is a calculation used in determining how much property tax is paid. And then by also including a limitation on the duration of that mill levy, everyone will know that the debt is going to get paid off and when that will be. C4 relates to bonds. Typically, the districts sell bonds in some form, sometimes they're privately placed, sometimes publicly placed. But the key point here is to make sure that those who are purchasing bonds understand the limit on how much they can rely on the district end-users. And that limit, of course, is established primarily in C3, how much the mill levy is and how much it lasts. But this is to make, as a part of the disclosure on the bond documents, to the bond purchasers that they can only expect so much from the end-users of the district. That'll make their relationship with the district's end-users more clear early on. And then, as I mentioned, sometimes debt can be placed privately. C5 addresses that and would require an independent certification that the terms are reasonable. And that private debt is pulled out and looked at separately because in a public setting, there is a competitive effort to determine who's going to own, who's going to buy the bonds. And of course, the district's interested in a lower bond interest rate. But sometimes the bonds are placed privately and sometimes that can be advantageous, but it does need to be at a reasonable term, so that would need to be evaluated. And that's the fifth recommendation on this slide.
Councilor Abel, your hand's up?
They submit a financial plan to us now, the ones we have approved annually, is that correct? Who reviews those? And does council ever see the result of that review?
Counselor, I may not have been clear. The financial plan is presented at the time that the service plan is prepared, when council is making a decision on whether or not to approve formation of a district. The annual reports that I'm aware of, or the annual report requirements that I can recollect, do not require a new financial plan annually. I don't have the information right here in front of me about what different districts are required to provide, but I don't recall one that includes a financial plan. Those, I'm sorry.
It's not a financial plan, it's a financial report. I may have misspoken. But the, when these things are created by the district judge, the district judge includes what steps they have or what reporting measures they have to take. So, and I believe one of those is presenting a financial standing report or something like that to the city. So there are annual reports that are submitted. Who reviews those?
You're correct, there are annual reports submitted. And for those who may not be aware, there are also annual reports submitted to the State's Department of Local Affairs. But to answer your question about review, I'm not sure that in Lakewood, there has been a rigorous review process. I'm not aware of one.
Thank you. But we are talking about a more rigorous review of the original financial plan, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's what's recommended.
Okay, but nothing about what they would file with us annually that might give us a hint of, an early hint of problems at the district if they had a knowledgeable eye put on them?
I think we will get in a little bit to annual reporting to the city a little bit later. Off the top of my head, I don't require or recall what all was included in that. That may be something that we want to take a look at when that comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jay, real quick, on the C3, when you're limiting the maximum debt, what happens? You know, in most projects, obviously, costs can overrun, there's some, there's some predictability, but there's also things that happen. What would happen if you have the debt ceiling, but they need to incur more debt because they haven't done the things they need to do?
Even in metro district developments, there are multiple revenue sources that are utilized typically for a variety of purposes. Just to pick one, one of the things that often has to be done is roads have to be built. And that expense is not entirely accurately predictable at the front end when construction documents have not been prepared. A project may take a couple of years and so construction inflation may occur, a variety of things. So you're right, that situation can certainly arise. The thought here is that the end-users of the metro district would have a cap, so they would not be the ones that could be looked at for those additional costs. Those additional costs would have to be paid for from another source of funds. It could be private equity, it could be the developer's own cash, it could be additional private debt incurred by the developer, it could be built into the home cost, so it's recovered at the sale of the home. But the, from the district's standpoint, the end-users would be capped on their debt reimbursement for, through a property tax. That's the proposal in C3.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions on this slide? Okay, moving right along.
I think that's my cue.
It is, thanks, Jay.
Thank you. In addition to debt for upfront costs, some metro districts, and certainly any could, but some metro districts include in their service plan an ongoing maintenance or operations obligation. That might be in the form of open space that's going to be retained by the metro district. It might be in the form of recreational facilities or playgrounds or any of those kinds of things. It might be in the form of additional landscaping in the public right-of-way where the metro district is, as a part of the development, going to incur ongoing operational and maintenance costs. So separating that from the previous slide, which was primarily about debt, this is more about ongoing operations and maintenance. The first thought here, C6, would be to include in the service plan an obligation of the metro district proponents to estimate what those costs would be, because those costs ultimately turn into a cost for the end-users and we want to provide, I think, is, the council wants to provide, a pretty clear picture to the end-users of what they're going to be dealing with as part of a metro district. C7 is kind of a protective device that probably has not been an issue in the past, but metro districts have the ability to raise funds in a variety of ways. In addition to the property tax that we've talked about already, they can have fees. In some cases, those fees may be appropriate, particularly when you think about operation and maintenance costs. For instance, if they have a recreational facility, whether it's a building or a playground, sooner or later, they're going to have to replace those facilities. In some cases, they may be better off using a fee for the users, particularly if it's a controlled space like a building, because the fees can be ongoing and pay for that ongoing maintenance cost. The thought here is that prohibiting the use of fees for debt payments will protect the earlier statements that I made, that there's a limitation on, from the previous slide, there could be elimination, a limitation on the commitment of the end-users to paying for debt. If the fees can be used for debt, that circumvents that limitation that was discussed on the previous slide. So that's the only reason for C7. C8 is a don't compete unless we agree clause. There are grants available to metro districts. Metro districts are a governmental entity created under state law and they can pursue certain kinds of grants. All this C8 says is that they can't do that if the city is eligible to pursue the same grant unless the city agrees. There may be places where it makes sense for the city and the district to agree to cooperatively pursue a grant or one entity or the other, but this would keep the initial decision with the city, as it is today, without the metro district. Nine and 10 are a little more complex. They deal with specific ownership tax. So maybe I should start with a rudimentary description of what the specific ownership tax is. Each year when we license our vehicles, in the payment that we make for those licenses and registration, there is a specific ownership tax. That tax money, by state law, goes to the county and then the county distributes it. The distribution of that is on a predetermined formula and it's proportional to the property tax entities receive throughout the county. So if, this is an extreme example, but if there were never any metropolitan districts created in Jefferson County, all of the specific ownership tax would go to the other governmental entities. It would go to the county because the county has property tax. It would be shared with the cities because the cities have property tax. It would be shared with the Mile High Flood District because it has a property tax. It would be shared with the schools because they have a property tax. Because there are metropolitan districts in Jefferson County, they also get a share of the specific ownership tax. It's, there is, there are different perspectives on this, obviously. Existing districts already get that share, so that would probably continue because they're probably dependent upon that. But the possibility of limiting access to specific ownership tax for new districts is certainly there. One option would be to retain or to pursue a state law change, which is what would be required to change what I just described in its entirety for future districts. The other option, which is C10, is to require future districts to remit the specific ownership tax that they receive from the county. There's a couple of ways that could be done. It could go all to the city. That would be one option. Another option would be to have it distributed among the non-metro district property taxing entities throughout the county, which is essentially what would have happened had there never been the first metro district. But it's a, that's a complex answer because then each metro district has to determine or find out what percentage of their receipts as specific ownership tax go to every one of the different property taxing entities throughout the county. I suspect that pursuing a state law change would be a significant challenge. Some of you may know better than I. The ability to cause new metro districts to remit their receipts in specific ownership tax to the city or to other entities is within the control of council on a policy decision at this point. is uh within the control of council on a policy decision at this point. It's a complex topic. Hopefully, I've sketched it relatively accurately and adequately, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions on any of these five proposals.
All right, council, any questions on, or discussion on this particular slide? All right, so let's move on. I think Jay, the next one is number 11, the next slide, and then you have the H series of recommendations dealing with the council authority to review changes, et cetera.
Yes, thank you. And I'll, maybe, maybe we'll focus on, uh, well, let me just run through these. H1, 2, and 4 come from that memo from June of 2020. Um, and, and these are, I think, fairly straightforward. Uh, the first is H1, that there actually be a list in the service plan of actions that may be material modifications. And in the memorandum, there's a list proposed. Uh, and, and the idea here, I should back up one step. The state law uh says the city council has two points of entry into metro districts. The first is approving the service plan initially when the district is proposed. I talked about that earlier. The second is when there is a material modification of the service plan. Uh, there's a, a conceptual definition in state law of what a material modification is, but there aren't really examples or a listing. Uh, H1 suggests that there should be a listing or could be a listing and the, there's a proposed list in the, the current memorandum. Uh, it would not be exhaustive because the, the the definition in the state law would still apply. And there may be, maybe something we don't think of now, but later realize fits the state law definition. So the list would not be exhaustive, but it would be helpful, I think, in, in at least providing some clarity of what could be anticipated as material modifications to the service plan. So then the question becomes, so what happens if there's a material modification? As I mentioned, state law requires that city council approve the material modification. In H2, uh, we deal with the situation where it's not absolutely clear on its face whether it's a material modification or not. So in one case, the city may say, gosh, the district's doing something that we think is a material modification. They have not come to the city council for approval of a material modification. Uh, the city would then, if H2 is approved, go to the district and say, here's what we think is a material modification. The district would respond with an explanation. The city would either concur or say, no, we still think it's a material modification. And then there was, there's a choice at that point. The district could either come to the council and get approval for the material modification. Or, under H4, there would be some kind of a step of, of a negotiation or or some other, what's often thought of as, as dispute resolution before court action. And the reason for that addition under H4 is that in the current structure under state law, if there's an argument, the only answer is go to, go to court. Uh, there's not a way to, to actually facilitate a, a process or require a process to try to resolve the issue. So H4 is trying to insert an informal, but, but structured process uh to make sure that the two parties try to figure this out before somebody starts a lawsuit. Doesn't prevent the lawsuit, but offers an, an alternative. The reverse could also happen if we go back up, up a, a step. It could be that, uh, now I've got to think about what the reverse was. The first, first one I think I described was the district proposes something, the city thinks it's a material modification, uh, the district does not. So what would be the reverse? The, uh, well, I'm not thinking of it right now. It's in the memo, but that's the intent here of H1, H2, and H4 is to try to, try to ensure that the parties reach a conclusion about what's a material modification or not and have this additional process before going to court.
I think Jay, the reverse may have been, where this was born out of, as council will recall, we had a situation where there was an issue of whether or not a district was engaged in material modification. And we did not have any tools whatsoever to even really address it. We did not have, uh, the oversight. We did not have the ability to bring them in, to have a hearing. So Jay, the reverse may be that council somehow retains an oversight where if it believes there's a material modification, it can say, no district, you can't do that. And if the district disagrees, then it follows all of these other steps. It, it would just be the exact inverse. The parties would just switch their roles. And maybe it, it puts the, um, just depends on, on which party you want to put the, uh, the deference to. And I, I suspect that this council may want to retain that, to, to retain its ability to say, no, this is a material modification. And if you disagree, district, then you can come explain to us why. But I just, historically, we've run into this situation. I think this H series addresses that head on, hopefully.
Thank you. You're exactly right.
Counsel, are there any questions on, uh, this slide? Before we move on to the next? Okay.
So E, also the E again is from the, the 2020 memorandum, but inserted also in the, the current year memorandum. Uh, E2 is simply a clarification. Uh, districts can create facilities that are clearly intended for just district residents, district end users. Uh, as an example, if they created a, uh, a recreation center or a weight room and the, the common area or something, but it was, uh, enclosed in a building, it was a building associated with the district. It was not intended for general public use. Uh, that should be clear and, uh, it should be clear upfront so that nobody later thinks, geez, the city approved the construction of this recreation facility. Why can't I drive all the way across town and use it? There, there's an exception, or not an exception, there's a, an adjunct to that where the district might allow non-district in, uh, folks to use the facility but charge a different fee. Uh, it's very much like, uh, perhaps a community. I, I regret to say, I don't know if Lakewood does this or not, but a, a community could charge rate A for residents and a higher rate B for non-residents. That's the kind of parallel that would be in this one. But it should be recognized early on that this is not going to be a general public use facility. Uh, I did, I did, I'm doing these in the reverse order of what they're on the slide, unfortunately. On the other hand, there are also, also can be walking paths, there can be general open space, there can be parks, there can be playgrounds that are, uh, that look just like city facilities. And they're as easily accessible as city facilities anywhere in town. Uh, if those are intended to be available to the general public uh to avoid the potential for confusion or argument later on, it would be good to clarify that on the front end. Uh, I'm not aware that we've had issues with either of these items, but as we, uh, have been doing a fairly thorough review of possibilities with metro districts, it was recognized that this, these are potential conflict points that could be resolved pretty easily on the front end. Uh, E3 is a little bit different and, uh, perhaps perhaps should be talked about separately. Maybe it'd be good to see if there's any council input on E2 first. It's a, E3 is very, very different.
All right, council, any questions on E2 comments? All right, let's hear about E3.
The examples I used in E2 were recreation kinds of facilities. Uh, there are infrastructure facilities, physical infrastructure facilities that districts build that sometimes could connect to another, uh, service area that's outside of that district. Uh, for instance, uh, roadways do that all the time. Districts build roadways. Generally, they're turned over to the city as public roadway, so they just become a, part of the public roadway system. Uh, but some utilities may be, may be a hybrid in between those two. For instance, a water line might be coming from some other provider. Well, it will be. Actually, it'll probably be coming from Denver Water or Consolidated Mutual Water Company or one of the other existing water and sewer facility, or providers in the community. So there's a connection from an outside utility in to serve the district. And if you think about geography for a minute, on the other side of the district under discussion, there may be other property that will eventually develop and they need to be serviced as well. And there may be a connection that flows through the district. Um, that happens among utilities of a variety of kinds. It can happen with sewer, it can happen with water. It can happen, although we don't get involved in some of these things, it can happen with power, electrical power and gas. Uh, it can happen with communications facilities. There's a lot of those kinds of things. The cost to the, the district under discussion may be minimal or zero. Uh, it may be minimal in that they have to extend a pipe onto the other side of the street that is their boundary. Uh, that piece of pipe may not directly serve the district, but it's essential to make the network whole and to be able to loop water lines and make sewer lines flow downhill and all those kinds of things. There are a number of other examples, uh, in the memorandum. The, the concept is that, uh, these are not unlimited circumstances. And the effect on the district end users, and this is probably key, that the effect on the district end users should be minimal. They should, the district end users shouldn't be paying uh the cost that should be attributable to another party, like a future development or perhaps the previous development. They should still be paying their share of the cost, but there may be some interaction where limited, uh, facilities that cross the line might, might be okay. There's a list in the memorandum, as it says here on pages 20 and 21, that provides some examples of the kinds of things where that might be applicable and may be worth recognizing on the front end in, in a policy or an ordinance.
I think that's the end of the deck. Mr. Rome, is that the end of the slides?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, let's open it up to questions, comments, and then, uh, we do have public input, um, as well. Counselor Harrison?
Thank you. Um, you guys put my head on spin, so, uh, good job, good job. The last item that you talked about, Jay, I just want to ask a quick question. I think we had a situation, and I want to make sure that I understand what you're asking. So if, and I'm going to use actual examples so that it, and, and I'm going to make up some stuff. So if here in Kendrick Lake, um, they wanted to go, and I'm just going to make up something totally absurd, put a water line under Kendrick Lake and it came out on the other side and there were people that would benefit from it on the other side, who would actually pay for that water line using this comment? Cause the end user is going to be somebody else, but who's going to pay for that across the, you said you didn't want? Okay, I'll just shut up and let you answer.
Water lines are a good example because that's, that's a pretty common occurrence with or without metropolitan districts. Uh, often the case is that one development uh either provides an, an additional length or a larger size water line in order to provide adequate capacity for future service to future property development. There is often a reimbursement agreement so that the provider of that line, the, the party who's doing the development at that time, can be reimbursed for that additional cost that's attributable to future development. So in order to access the, uh, the water line, as you described it, the future development would be obligated to reimburse a, a fair pro, uh, uh, prorata share of that additional water line. And I think that's one of the examples that, that we included in the memo as a possibility is to be reimbursed uh, in addition to the possibility that the cost would be minimal in some circumstances.
I think we had a situation similar to that many years ago and I, I'm using really old brain cells, so, um, I'll just let it go at that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Gutwin?
Thank you. Uh, just a process question. Um, the next study session is going to be what? Again? So are we going through the whole thing again and then we're going to have another meeting on the whole thing again? Or, I'm just trying to?
So this, this original, remember, this, this would have been one night. So this is a bonus night. You're all very lucky that you got a bonus night of districts. So the first night, it should have been complete. It would have been round one. It would have just been a two-part study session. So think of it that way. Part two of this, this is the educational, um, especially for those that weren't, uh, part of the committee. This is just kind of, here's the universe of ideas and recommendations of things the committee did, that staff recommends. And then we come back for the study session in June where hopefully we would get consensus from the body about what recommendations it would like to see come back in the form of ordinance. Um, and also any other discussion, like I mentioned at the onset, whether, um, there are some of these recommendations that speak to it. You could limit the debt, limit the size, you could prohibit them. Those types of discussions, I think, are appropriate at that study session when we're getting ready to, uh, bring back a, a bigger ordinance than in the future.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Rome, while we're, um, waiting for council to, everyone raise their hands in unison, do you have any, uh, public input? Anybody on the line that would like to hit star six? Or star nine, sorry?
It, I was giving him a minute there, but no, we did have the one caller still, but it doesn't look like he would like to comment.
Okay. Any other questions, comments by council tonight? Okay, well, I'll talk very slowly in case that caller, oh, Counselor Vincent. And you're on mute. You're on mute. And you're still on mute.
Okay, so the next study session, we will go through these. Now, do you see the process as, as you would like information on what we think beforehand? Like to, as chair of the committee send it to you, or do you say, think it will be more like, okay, C1, do we agree with this or not? C2, do we want to see this be part? Cause this is, this is pretty lengthy, so I'm just trying to get an idea of what it is that, um, how, how we'll manage this. And maybe I'm the only one who has that question.
No, it's a fair point. It's a 21 or 20-page memorandum. There's a lot of recommendations. If you got rid of the text, and that's why we did this in two parts, I believe. Um, if you strip that away and you just had kind of line items of here's the recommendations and you use the memorandum as reference points, especially since we've, we've gone through this pretty in-depth. I don't think, it will be, it will be a task. I mean, there's no way to sugarcoat it. It will be a, a heavy lift to get through, to try to get consensus and get everyone's questions. So I don't think this would be any different than any other, you know, you would submit questions to staff, comments to staff and how they want to present it. As you can see, Mr. Hutchinson does a very good job of roadmapping and I'm sure he would appreciate any shortcuts along the way or any feedback that you have, uh, along those steps. Ms. Hudson, you're?
Yeah, so ultimately, yeah, thank you. Um, ultimately, staff will need to bring forward a draft ordinance. So to the extent that we can have, uh, any direction or get a sense for what city council, you know, is thinking about these different steps and these different, um, issues that were brought up, that would be helpful as it relates to staff then bringing the draft ordinance forward. helpful as it relates to staff then bringing the draft ordinance forward. And that would help, that would help direct the conversation on the study session, what did I say, on June twenty-fourth or twenty-first, right in there?
Twenty-first, yeah. Okay, so even though it's lengthy, we're going to still ask the questions to staff, try to come up with some agreement, but just realize it's going to be a lengthy process, and we will probably have to go through each of those steps to say, yes, no, we need more information, move it forward. Is that what I'm getting?
That that is accurate.
Okay, okay. Wanted wanted to make sure, since this has already been a two-part thing, so, okay. And and thank you for all the information, Jay, that was great. Thanks.
And Mayor Proten, we did have another phone caller just sort of pop in. They haven't raised their hand yet, so if we want to give them the opportunity.
Okay, so if you've just called in, you hit star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute. Okay, well...
It's not.
All right, well, if nobody has any other questions or comments, I guess, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, for all the work you put in for these various memos and working with the committee, and I can probably speak on behalf of the committee as this chair, that you were very, very, very helpful in getting us through that. If nothing else, the organization was key, since this is such a a big topic. So thank you very much for that, and thank you for tonight's presentation and going through those slides as well. Okay, well, it is a study session, so we will conclude tonight with any committee reports that anyone may have. So committee chairs, anybody have any reports on anything? Counselor Abel.
Thank you. The Campaign Finance Committee meeting last week became the Campaign Finance Committee meeting of next week. Will be meeting on the twenty-ninth. Our attorney was not available to meet with us earlier, so the Campaign Finance Committee will be meeting at 6:00 PM April twenty-ninth. Thank you.
Counselor Gutwin.
Couldn't find my unmute button for a second there. Our next legislative committee meeting will be this Thursday, nine AM.
Counselor Bure.
Yeah, we had our committee meeting for Jeffco Transportation Committee, and mostly we looked at some presentations, just kind of had some overviews of different things. I thought one of the more interesting ones was on the Front Range Rail System or the potential of a Front Range Rail System. They were talking about the sort of fee structure and what that might look like if something like that were to be created, so I thought that was pretty, pretty interesting, thought I'd share with that with you. Thanks.
Okay, any other committee reports? All right, Ms. Hudson, anything from staff?
No, sir. Nice job running the meeting.
And anything, Ms. McKinney-Brown?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, well, with that, we've concluded our reports, and we will see you all next Monday for a regular meeting of Lakewood City Council. It will begin at 7:00 PM. Check the agenda and look at the top, there is all the call-in information for the next meeting, and we will see you then. So with that, we can adjourn this study session.